Isn't that really what's important?
See, because I was EMB certified, to be EMB certified, and then CPR certified first. To be EMB certified. Yeah, you had to be CPR first, before you were certified. Because you gotta know how to do it, and tell somebody how to do it. Even though you're reading up this place, you're reading, you can't do it. They have the cards, but the cards are gonna have to go. We just need to switch it up. Software took an answer, you would change it. You get one of those things, you know, when you feel, when, when you want to go to. Even though they teach you that, even if you're still, it's easier to have software, so that way you ask the question exactly how the question is working. And you call it, if you're, if you're saying exactly how it's working, the order that you see. Exactly, there's no, no liability. I don't really, but you understand what I'm saying, but that's why. You got to be less loud for me. Because they were fighting for you. He and Dee were fighting for you. In the order that's changed here. That's when you get, that's when you get it. Take liability.
All right, let's go, go ahead and get started. Public hearing. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh one, in order to provide for installment payment of taxable real property within Darlington County pursuant to Title twelve, Chapter forty-five, Section twelve forty-five, and said five South Carolina total laws as amended, second read on page seven. Does anyone wish to speak to ordinance number nineteen oh one? If not, I declare public hearing, ordinance number nineteen oh one closed. One B, ordinance number nineteen dash oh two, in order to identify, suspend, indefinitely suspend sundown work prohibition, commonly referred to as blue law, pursuant to Title fifty-three, Chapter one, Section fifty-three dash one dash one sixty, of South Carolina total laws as amended, second reading. Does anyone wish to speak to ordinance number nineteen oh two? If not, I declare ordinance number nineteen oh two closed. One C, ordinance number nineteen dash oh three, in order to amend ordinance number eighteen dash oh four, Darlington County, just for your eighteen nineteen budget ordinance, for supplemental appropriation to the library funds received, and expand additional lottery funds established effective date of this ordinance, second reading, reading. Anyone wish to speak to ordinance number nineteen oh three? If not, I declare public hearing, ordinance number nineteen oh three closed. I'm gonna call the order. The litigant in case of the pledge of allegiance. Flower, you have the pledge and you judge the.
Oh Father, which our government, most holy and everlasting Father. Father, we all want to thank you, oh Lord, for last night rest, and the flame up to us to awaken the love of the morning. And Father God, we just want to thank you, oh Lord, for starting snow a new day, and closing down right now. And we asking you to do, oh Lord, the pinnies on building. Bless each and every one that has a tent here today, oh Lord. And we asking you to bless any ones that could, ten will not have ten. And Father, we asking you to do, oh Lord, to go with the homes, hospitals, wherever the sick is, oh Lord. Father, we know that you are the one, and there is none other. Father, we gonna let you have more medicine, you have your doctor, than any church or whatsoever. And Father, we asking you to touch them, oh Lord, so that they can take spirit from you when you have. And Father God, we asking you to do, oh Lord, to go with your foreign country, touch our boys, girl, men and women, give them some strength to force out a scene of coming home them day, oh Lord. And Father, we asking you to lead us, and guide us in this, in your name you say, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, personal appearances. Just ten minutes. Ms. Pamela Prince.
Two minutes.
Citizen Thomas person. Citizen. This is John Smithy.
Over my wife, I was gonna say, how is all my favorite people doing? I'm here to appeal a meeting that we had with the planning commission, April the fifteenth, I believe. They passed it to where a cell phone tower could be built about four hundred and fifty feet from my house. And I'm not here to discuss the pros and cons, whether the radiation is bad or good. I've got two articles here that definitely says they're bad. If you live right close to a cell phone tower, can give you insomnia, cancer, other problems. But, um, so we're not here to debate that. My problem is, since it's about four hundred and fifty feet from my house, and it's being put on Lilo Benton, or Benton Farm, on Society Hill Road. My question is, why, since there's a perception that these towers can be bad for people living right up under them, why couldn't the tower be placed somewhere on the farmland, completely out of sight? We just built a house about two years ago, with five acres of land there. And, um, one day, we might sell it. Especially if one of us die, we don't plan to really stay in Darlington County, 'cause my wife's got people in Columbia or Georgia, and I got people in Conway and Wilton, and probably Boo. And so the perception of a, a, a cell phone tower giving off radiation, whether it's true or not, could cause the value of my property, property to go down. And, um, and then, on top of that, five G, which is gonna be coming out later on, on that tower, which has not really been tested yet, and there's concerns about it. And so, I want to appeal that planning, uh, commission on that cell phone tower, and ask that, you know, if it is gonna go up, please move it on the farmland, out of sight, so nobody can see it, especially if they're gonna try to buy my land. I have a farmer, there's another farmer, that would be interested to put it down on Rando, where the old Rando school used to be, back in that area. He'd be glad to have that.
We take that into consideration. Thank you. George Tanner.
Yes, how come I stand before you again on the usual problem that I stand before you about for the number of years? That's strange. And it was upsetting the other evening, well, matter of fact, just yesterday, when the gentleman, family spoke to me about the problem of the drainage of building a house. They are at a lake, I call it, they are at my present, my address as well. There's water right there about a foot from where they're building the house, and on the other side, another big hole on the other side. I can't see how many high ditches that he even gonna prepare to dig this foundation to build this house. And what, there is a stain. Only thing I can say now is, why, when, continuously, that I must address you in the manner that I have a drainage problem in my neighborhood, I do not receive an answer for the number of years? Why? I have a good example with me, with the fire department and the rescue squad adopted. I was terminated off of both of them, and I was sitting here and gotten no answer, really, for why I was terminated. And this is the largest, largest problem, it's continuing, it's going. Where is an answer? We have a meeting, they're about two to the, two to the. No answer yet. Is this a continual problem with no answer, or no discussion, or nothing? Some kind of money, some kind of tax, other than the property owners that they ditch, or whoever, between the state, the county, and whoever? When are we gonna get some legal answers for the problem continuing since nineteen sixty-five? That's forty some years. Some kind of ways, they said, no chain hanging, no claim of the answer. How can we continue? Do we need a senator, the governor, or whoever, whatever, higher? Let's do something. And this is what I tell you, there's getting over. Just slang names. We need an answer, we need help, or we want help. And how can we get together to determine this? Be looking for the answer, Father. Look for some kind of way of the answer.
Diane Smith.
Good evening, my name is Diane Gamble-Smith. I live in the South Park subdivision off of Highway one fifty-one in Hartsfield, Southland County. Um, I've been there almost thirty years. We built a home out there. Um, I'm also here to address the drainage and the water flooding problems out in the area. We didn't have any flooding at all until we had that first hundred-year rain problem, in, I believe it was twenty sixteen. Um, I've been complaining to SC DOT. They continued to tell me that, well, we had never had that much rain before, there was a high water table out there, um, um, that the water just had to drain away. Um, they came out, I believe it was in December, when we had a really bad flooding problem, and, uh, they just came out and put a sign up that said, "Water on the road." I've seen the trucks out there, I'm retired now, so I've seen the trucks out there, they'll come and poke around and whatnot. Um, about three weeks ago, I spoke to a Ms. Pruitt at SC DOT, because on January twenty-fourth, we had a rain downfall of about fifteen minutes, that's all. It was just a rain downfall. And I have pictures to show you of the flooding from that just fifteen minutes. And, I mean, it's destroying my property, I have property damage, my driveway is completely cracked, and I really think something should be done about it. Now, the last time I spoke to Ms. Pruitt, she put me in touch with the supervisor, who said they finally found out that there may be a problem out there in the woods, where the water's supposed to be draining to some kind of covert. And someone had some property back there, the property has caved in, and they think that's what's causing the problem, because the water's coming from different avenues, just not in our area. Um, however, he said they would have to contact the property owner to get permission to go on the land, to do whatever work may be necessary. That was about three weeks ago, and I haven't heard anything since. So something needs to be done. Thank you.
This is Flicker Lane?
This is Flicker Lane, six thirteen Flicker Lane. And my neighbor's here also, she lives at the end of the road. Ms. Washington.
All right, thank you. This is Mary Washington.
I'm Mayor Washington, and I live at six, oh six Flicker Lane in Hartsfield, in the south, in the South Park subdivision. And, and it rained, and just like she said, when it rained out there, I mean, just a flood. Just a flood, and the state, when I got in touch with Darlington County, Darlington County said it wasn't on them, so then they say DOT. So when I got in touch with DOT to tell them about that water issue, DOT stayed there at the state. So then, when I got in touch with the state, then the state wanted to put it on me, the state wanted to say that it's coming from, from my ditch, but my, that ditch is on the backside of my lane. And I have pictures that show where my property line, um, in it. And whenever you, whenever it's raining, it's, the water, the water is so high, you got to ride into all of that water to get, to get to wherever you was going there. And then, I built this house out there about nine years ago, and then I'm scared that all that water, it's gonna do a lot of damage to my house. I mean, suppose my house starts sinking because that man that hold, is holding water and stuff. I mean, we don't know what to do. Um, we going to the county, the state, DOT, but they don't have no answer for us, so what are we, what are we supposed to do?
Excuse me, could I just show you a quick picture?
Maybe after the council meeting, you have a, you know.
Okay.
Is this DOT problem, or is that?
Yeah, this is a DOT problem here. Ms. Douglas, do we have any redress with DOT? I mean, can we send them a letter?
This, this particular one, it came up in the CTC meeting the other night. Mr. Richardson is well aware, that Mr. McLeary's DOT is well aware of it. And they have said they have addressed the problem, or still addressing the problem.
I understand, they're trying to get the, send the truth across the other.
I reckon the entry they were talking about, this is a DOT, right? This is a DOT, right? Nothing can he just go and do.
Right, right. Mr. Ray Thomas?
I'm the Rain Thomas, I live at twenty-six thirty-four, I'm Governor Williams, Highway Darlington, South Carolina. I'm here to talk about the issue of litter. It's a shame how the truckers come from, dollars and shredder come from, every day, Monday through Saturday, littering. I'm a sixty-four-year-old handicapped disabled lady. And if you was to ride down Highway fifty-two, it's a eyesore. It look like that road been here for fifty years, and it haven't been here ten. So, I think it should be something done, if it was us, as passengers riding down littering, and the highway patrolmen, or the deputy sheriffs, we would get a ticket. But this is something constantly done, day by day. I go out there and I pick up, and I pick up, I remember I used to have to pay to get the young bags, to pick up somebody else's trash, coming from the truckers. And one day, I follow a truck, eight miles, it littered, eight miles. And it's not even from Darlington County. Could you imagine how many pieces of stuff like this here come out of this truck? This is like styco, from where they're not blowing out the bed liners on the trucks, okay? And I think it should be something done. It really is eyesore. If you was to ride down that road, you would think, it is horrible. I'm surprised to see it continually getting worse and worse. And I clean upside my road at least three times a week. And Mr. Danny Duke, 'cause he's one of the county councils, and he lived down the road from me, and he can tell you, I'm not saying something that I'm not doing. And I think it's something that should be done.
There is, there is, although it's, um.
I'm gonna tell you the problem right there. Those truckers are not cleaning those trucks off after they come over. And like you said, that, they got a place for the truck to pull and clean it off, but they not doing.
It's not on the way to the steel mill.
It's on the way out.
It's on the way out. And so, when they, they dump it, and then they got all that loose stuff that's still in there. And then, when they drive, and the wind charge, and then just, that's in the back of the bed. Whether it's in the bed of the pickup trucks, or whether it's in the big tractor trailers, where the car's been crushed, all of, I mean, that's, it's not on the way in that it's blowing out the west. It's on the way out.
Do they have tarp's on it or something?
Well, they tarp it on the way in. But on the way out, but it don't, it's not.
They don't use no tarp's. The average truck driver don't have no tarp over their truck.
They got a place to clean it off up there, but they won't pull it out, what, they won't pull it and clean it up.
Let me let Terry, um, our belt service, which is over code, say something. She has been trying to deal with this with some other agencies that, that could enforce it. And our code officer can't pull it on the over, they don't have blue light, so, go ahead.
Was it helping the sheriff? He contacted the state level for us, and they've been out there working the area. He actually forwarded me two emails today, where they've done some activity out there, trying to do something with those trucks.
Are you sure? Okay. Lots of weekends, I said, when I come through, they pull out and do it. Six, four, like, all right. Is that everyone?
No, it'll be ten minutes.
No, 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 we won't do that.
Okay, let's go to the ten minutes.
Uh, so we, are we through with?
Yep, we're through with citizen Tommy, yes. So we need to go to ten minutes, citizen Tommy.
You wanna go ahead and do this?
Yeah, we're gonna do ten minutes.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
And this Pamela Prince, she's not here, I think you're gonna represent her?
Yes, sir.
This is the PD Coalition.
Good evening. My name is Debra Stess, I'm with PD Coalition. Um, this month is, um, April, as we all know. This is sexual assault, as well as child abuse awareness month. I am the counselor for Darlington County, the counselor advocate. I want to make sure that everybody here knows that the service that I provide is a free service. Um, I lend some cards, if you know somebody that is in need of some help, please let me know. Alicia.
And I'm Alicia Rush, I'm the family advocate for Durant Children's Center. We service children that have been abused and abducted, and have also witnessed crimes. Until last year, we serviced six hundred and forty-six children altogether. I just want to thank you for giving us time to come in and talk about what we.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, good evening, ladies. On your resolution, I'm gonna make an amendment, uh, at the appropriate time. Presently, it says throughout the PD region, and I'm gonna move to restrict that to Darlington County, because this is Darlington County Council, uh, and in the end, it says the PD region. We don't have any authority over the PD region, uh, and so I'm gonna limit it to Darlington County, but I didn't want to try to surprise you in any way.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kimmy Brady, you can call me Kay. I am the rape prevention coordinator with PD Coalition, and I just wanted to extend my thank you, my gratitude to you all, as well as many of you community members, who have helped us service sixty-nine sexual assault victims and over six hundred child abuse victims. Stay beside us.
Hi Carol. Ms. Tanya Flowers?
Good evening, Councilor, how are you?
Great, and you guys?
I'm Mrs. Tanya Flowers. Uh, I reside at fifteen eighty-one Society Road, located in Darlington County. And the reason I stand before you this afternoon, I'm standing on behalf of a situation that came for us less than three weeks ago. Uh, we received a letter, some of the residents in that community, which is the Mount Cleric community, that, that would be, a tower would be in place within fifteen hundred feet of our home. Uh, we got, it said we had any concerns that for us to show up at the meeting, which was here with the codes and planning committee. We showed up, uh, thinking that we were gonna be listened to, and what, uh, what, how we felt about it, but lo and behold, it was something different. They had already made up their mind, uh, you know, they had approval for the tower to be placed there, due to the fact that the person that was presenting the case, um, had all these regulations. Well, uh, I brought it before you guys, because I was instructed during the meeting for us to talk to county council, and also contact FCC, which I've done. I contacted FCC, um, LC, and I have these right here, and that way, y'all can have a copy of what was forwarded to me from FCC. Um, if it's okay, I leave this with you, you can distribute it to everyone, they can get a copy. And on that, it shows the day I called, um, the case number, as well as the complaint. I was instructed to call FCC, so that's what I done. When I called FCC, FCC says that the tower communicator who's gonna install the tower has thirty days to answer to them, as well as answer to me. Um, complaint that I have is, I'm living at least five hundred feet where the tower's gonna be placed. With that being said, my husband, which is Pastor Flowers, has a bullet enlarged in his aorta, which is his main blood vessel in his body, and it's like three to seven millimeters away from his aorta. He also has a bullet in his back that can't be moved, the doctor's not gonna move it, and we can't find a surgeon to move it, because they say if they touch it, um, that's automatically. So with that being said, I have some concerns about how close we live to the tower, and could someone give us some clear evidence how that would affect him? We also want to know how it would affect us, as residents living that close to that tower, um, as far as cancer concerns, as far as other health issues. There are a lot of elderly people in that area, there's a lot of sick people in that area. Um, we have children that are in that area, and that's pretty close to our home room. Um, less than five hundred feet, that's pretty close, with the waves giving off of whatever they got going on. So I was actually able to communicate with the person that presented this case before the code. We have been in contact all week long. Well, he's put me in contact with the vice president of the tower, that's gonna install it. He said the only thing he could, um, uh, give to me was, um, scientific evidence. He don't know how it would affect him, or whatever the case would be, if it would affect him. That's not good enough for me, because that's my husband. Um, I don't want to wake up one morning and find him dead. So with that being said, um, they instructed me to make a doctor appointment and get something from the doctor. I did it. So April seventeenth, Mr. Flowers has a doctor appointment, and we're gonna get something in the writing from the doctor, saying, or seeing, if that would affect him in any way. I'm not opposing the tower, I'm just saying, put it further back. That's too close to my home, that's too close to my grandchildren, that's too close to the elderly people that are out there. And we have a, a few of the residents, Mr. Smithy lives next door to me on this side, which is four hundred feet away from the tower where it's gonna be. So literally, we can walk out back door, and we can, right there at the tower. They have a hundred and sixty acres of land, why not put it back some? That's all we're saying, don't put it so close to our house that it would affect us, because no one has no concrete evidence if and how it's gonna affect us. And I think that's no more than fair than to, uh, look into it. They give me just a scientific. They give me just a scientific answer, that you think scientifically, and you don't have no proof if or how this would affect my husband. I love my husband, and I don't want to wake up and find a dead body beside me. I don't want to come home from the grocery store church and find my husband in the front yard, due to the fact that the radiation from that tower pulled that bullet and moved it, and it killed him dead on the spot. He cannot have a CT, he cannot have an X-ray, he cannot have an MRI, and the best doctor in Florence, neurologist, heart surgeon, would not touch it. So with that being said, I don't know what, what y'all place with this, or how y'all were gonna handle it, or what could be done, but at this point, I'm waiting on FCC, and I'm waiting for the doctor to give me some type of proof, some concrete evidence, how this would affect my husband, if it would affect him, and also, the residents that are in that area. Like I said, there's elderly people in that area, some are sick, some have diseases, some have kidney, some is taking chemo, some doing all kind of things, so we want to know how it's gonna really affect us. And that's all we're just asking, just put it further back.
Thank you. Thanks, ma'am.
Messes. I'm with her, just give me just a little minute. I'm with her, I was scared at the meeting on last month, too. And I'm, I'm just gonna give you some, and my husband is sick also, and he have a fibula and he's have kidney disease and all that stuff. So is there any way y'all can get back with us? When y'all get, come to a solution, then let us know, is this thing safe or not to be a bonus?
I'm sure somebody will make a decision, or find something, that's, you hear about from the tower or the planning commission.
We're gonna open session, council, we're gonna make a decision, hold, or send.
Okay, y'all, so y'all will get with it.
Chairman, we need our names for a. What was your name?
My name is Martha McDonald.
Martha McDonald.
Yes. I didn't want to sign in, I wouldn't, I couldn't sign this, but I was just serious, that's how it's too close, it just seemed like it's too close. And like she said, when we came, it wasn't, it seemed like we was taken serious, because we were talking, and she was looking other ways, it was, we didn't take her serious. And you know, when you stand before people, you hope people to take you serious when you come to a problem, how you, you want an answer from people. And it just looked bad, I, when I left, I felt foolish, because nobody would be paying attention, so we was talking. We came up and gone, but he was just looking all off, or looking all different, these people not listen to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, too.
All right, let's move on. I would move to amend the agenda to bring forward executive session for a discussion of negotiations, this proposed intergovernmental contractual arrangement with the county of Society Hill for certain services, as well as receipt of legal advice, where legal advice relates to a continuing threat or pretend to pain regarding permits for communication towers. You say? You say? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? At this time, I move that we go into executive session with members of council, our county attorney, and our county administrator.
Mr. Flowers, just allow me to make one quick motion, before that, and then make your move. Mr. Chairman, I would move to amend the agenda to add under section eleven A, under me, as far as appointments to historical commissions, there's been a resignation, and I'm gonna make an appointment tonight.
I second that. Aye. Mr. George. Dave. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flowers. I'm just firing, we want to go into second session with. County, the county council, county administrator, and county attorney, for receipt of legal advice. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, we're out of executive session, go ask the state.
This has had a dirty bomb.
Set agenda.
Who's the approval, set agenda item six A through six F.
Second. In discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. As opposed, I say aye. Approval of minutes.
Move the approval of the minutes of March fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
In discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, and ordinance? You started off.
Yes, sir. Ordinance eight A, which is ordinance number nineteen dash alt one, and ordinance to provide for the installation, excuse me, installment payments of taxable real property within Darlington County pursuant to Title twelve, chapter forty-five, section twelve, dash forty-five, dash seventy-five, Cybercrime Code and laws as amended, second reading. You can find a copy of it on page ninety-six. I move the approval of the ordinance for second reading.
You say it, you say it. Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Stewart, do we have a cost impact statement of what it will take to implement a plan like this? Do we have the necessary infrastructure to be able to make this cost feasible?
Well, when you say cost feasible, I don't know if you mean in returns, money, but what I can tell you is it'll take about eighty-seven hundred dollars to add the software to the treasurer's side of our software package. And then, a continuous, about twelve hundred dollars a year, that's part of the eighty-seven for the first year, for the maintenance of that part of the software package, to do the requirements of printing the coupons that are required by state law, mailing that to them. Now, as far as extra time on the treasurer's office staff, that's just in the staff work department.
So, we're, we're looking at about a ten thousand dollar a year?
Well, the first time would be eighty-seven, then after that, about twelve hundred dollars reoccurring every year, just to keep this program up. And you haven't asked this, but I do want to make sure this is clear, because I don't know that everybody sees this the same way. This installment plan is not after the bills are levied, this installment plan is prepaying prior to the taxes ever being levied. So even if you approve this, the next month, it goes through third reading until it passes. Individuals will have to notify the treasurer between December of two thousand and nineteen and January fifteenth of two thousand and twenty, that for their fall bill in two thousand and twenty, which comes out sometime around October, that they want to pay installments, they start paying in February.